Jolly, are you ready?
At 6:30, I'd like to call the February 28th, 2023 City Council meeting to order. And I'd like to ask Mr. Tucker to go ahead and give our invocation.
So we can bow our heads. Thank you, Lord, for giving us this time to come together as we work on the issues that confront our town. Give us some clarity of mind, wisdom, and insight as we do your will. Protect all those first responders who continue to watch over us and protect us on a daily basis, in Christ's name.
Please stand and join me in the pledge to the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you for joining us here tonight. As you can see, we have some council members and our mayor absent. Our mayor is stuck in a plane somewhere between here and DC. Ms. Westner, the mayor pro tem, is home ill. And our other council member, Mr. O'Neil, is taking care of some ill parents. So thank you for joining us tonight. We do have a quorum, and we're anxious to get started on the agenda. We'd like to first ask Ms. Jody Wright to come forward from the Rockwall County Women in Need, and we have a proclamation to discuss teen violence. Jody, did you want to say anything ahead of time, or do you want me to just do the proclamation? Next on the agenda is the rules of decorum. I'd like to go ahead and read extracts of the rules of decorum that first started back on May 13th in 2017. Again, we have many people in the audience that are not members of the City of McLendon-Chisholm and visitors, so we want to make sure that we are polite and listening to what rules of decorum have been in place now for six years. As a point of order, please wait to be recognized by the presiding officer before commenting. When you are first recognized, please, for the benefit of our secretary and other citizens present, please state your first and last name and your address. When someone is recognized, they have what is known as the floor. With the exception of the presiding officer, interjecting why someone else has the floor without being recognized is to be considered out of order, and the chair will address such actions promptly. Decorum dictates, and I will request, that everyone present be respectful of the opinions, statements, and actions of the council and our citizens that are present, especially when you may not agree with or take exceptions to the words or actions of others. Respecting decorum mitigates disagreements from escalating into arguments or worse. It can also help to bring clarity to a point of view rather than rushing to judge the motives of others. As with any open meetings, all citizens present have the right to attend, but no one has the right to disrupt the proceedings. The chair will make every effort to respectfully address anyone who violates decorum by moving or speaking out of order. Should anyone continue to disregard the admonitions of the chair, to comply with decorum, that citizen will be asked to leave. Adhering to the rules of decorum is less about showing respect to the council, but more about demonstrating respect for oneself and for all of our citizens. Thank you for listening as I go through that information. So we have four speakers tonight that wish to speak about various topics. First, I'd like to ask Mr. Steinhegen to come forward.
Start again. Robert Steinhegen, 304 Pheasant Hill Drive. I wanted to address the council regarding the item 7.2 that is on the agenda for tonight, which is a development agreement that has been submitted to the City of McLendon-Chisholm. I think that the citizens deserve some of the following questions to be answered before taking action on this agreement. And here are the questions. There's 10 of them that I have for the council to consider. One, when will the mud be approved? Has an election taken place for that mud? And if so, when did that election take place? And how many people voted in that election? Number two, when was this development first proposed to the city? Number three, when was the first time the city council was given notice or made aware about this proposed development? What was the outcome of that? Excuse me. Number four, when was the first time the city council had a discussion or deliberation in open session regarding this development? What was the outcome of that discussion? And what was the timeline established that brought us to this point of a development agreement? Number five, what obligations must the city abide by or act on tonight? And the reason I ask this is this development agreement was submitted under the presumption that the city council will take action to approve it tonight, since the date of executed recitals, 4/13, 14, and 21, fall on a day in February 2023. And if I'm not mistaken, today is the last day of February 2023. After reviewing other development agreements submitted to cities in Rockwall County, unless the recitals are established in previous agreements to include a presumptive date that clearly terminates under the specific recitals is uncommon. Number six, who has been representing the city in negotiations with a developer to prepare this agreement? The reason I ask this is this agreement goes into extraordinary detail regarding water. The developer has clearly been well informed about the possibility of the city becoming a water provider and includes recognition of the dynamic state of negotiations between the city and RCH, and includes clauses that accommodate if the city fails to become a water provider. However, this agreement requires the city to provide police services and a police substation, even though the city council has inferred that no decision about a city police department has been made. Unlike the details that are included regarding water, there are no references to the fact that the city does not have a police department and no clauses included to accommodate the city continuing to utilize the sheriff's department for law enforcement should the city council decide to do so. So what am I missing? Has the city decided to start a police department? And if so, when was that decision made? And when is the council intending to take an official vote on the matter? And then finally, additionally, this agreement also requires McLendon-Chisholm to provide EMS services. Now, how can the city do this when McLendon-Chisholm has contracted with the county, along with all other cities in Rockwall County through the emergency services board, to provide EMS services via the Rockwall County EMS? It seems to me that anyone representing the city with this developer should have known these facts, so that this glaring mistake could have been avoided before being presented. Like the trilogy development. Number seven, like the trilogy development agreement, why are there no density numbers included in the agreement? A link to a June 24th Dallas Morning News article on the Telus Group's own website states that the development is planned for 3,100 lots. Number eight, will the city engage with a competent attorney that is board certified in real estate law? By the way, there are 39 listed by the State Bar of Texas in Dallas, or at the very least, one whose practice area includes real estate law. And there are over 75 in Rockwall County listed by the State Bar. To represent the city and provide legal counsel to the city council and staff. According to the State Bar of Texas City, Attorney Michael Hollis's practice does not include real estate law, and his legal advice to the council regarding the trilogy development has demonstrated that he is not competent to guide the council, the city, on matters related to development agreements like this. Number nine, can citizens be assured that the city council will not take direction from the developer's legal counsel? And finally, what are the tangible benefits and drawbacks to McLendon-Chisholm for making this development part of its ETG and for not making this development part of its ETJ and for not making this development part of its ETJ? I sincerely hope that you will have those questions answered before moving forward with this development agreement. Thank you so much.
David Black at 1419 C. Lane. First and aside, why weren't the minutes of the last meeting not in the agenda?
They're not in because the secretary didn't get them in on time. That's okay. There's no requirement for them to be done by the next meeting. She'll get them in the next meeting.
Oh, okay. So, okay. I like to try to be prepared for meeting to meeting, but without those, it's pretty complicated. It has to do with the new development. Regarding that, I agree with others in previous couple of meetings. They said, "We need an open forum because there are just so many questions on these developments that, as you can see, people have, and we're getting no answers. There's no feedback. There's nothing like that." So an open forum would be great. You might have to rent a larger space. I'm sure you would need that. And I agree with everything Steinhegen said regarding questions. I had a list. You know, I was curious about how we got past the spot where citizens' wishes in the Comprehensive Plan 2021 have been kind of railroaded by the path of unrestrained high-density development. Steinhegen mentioned something about the density. I looked on the same websites and saw, wow, this is pretty small. They'll have some big green space and then packed houses, at least in Lakin Prosper. Also, I'm curious, though, are there Texas laws that have had the effect to thwart the will of the citizens of McLendon-Chisholm? I mean, they have to follow the law. That would also help to explain things, if there are such things causing some forced conflict with our comprehensive plan. I was also curious about the ETJ as well. I'm not clear on what the city is responsible for in an ETJ. It looks like everything is in this agreement. I don't know if there are things by law that we're responsible for, but the agreement made it pretty clear. It was interesting how the protection services, which would be firearm emergency and police, I took police to mean sheriff's or whoever. And the agreement refers to people in the new development will be treated with the same level of support by the protective services as the city limits. That's good, but that could be taken probably multiple ways, but I suspect it's taken the number of people in the city limits versus the number of people in the new area. Just looking at buildings, commercial and real estate buildings, maybe we have 1,500. That's just a wild-ass guess, but about 1,500. And then, as mentioned, there's up to 3,100 homes, maybe, say, 3,000. Well, that's a 200% increase in services for us, so how does that get paid for? And then, my last question I have, which I know you can't answer, is what is the limited purpose annexation of property thing? I hadn't seen that limited purpose, like we can tax them on some things but not other things. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you. John Tauss.
John Tauss, 216 Devonport. I'm going to make this fairly brief. I'm really disappointed that our mayor couldn't show up today. I'm not sure what all the circumstances are, but I was stuck yesterday in New York, trying to get home as well, but made it home. I'm not employed by the City of McLendon-Chisholm, so I'm a little confused as to what his schedule, what's so important that he could be doing and other council members might be doing when we have such an important issue going on right now in our city limits. This city, it just disappeared. This city was supposed to be about high-quality infrastructure and low density. So I'd like to know when we got sidetracked, who is responsible, and those that are accountable need to come forth that are taking away what we moved into this city and what we thought we elected you to do. So we need answers, and clearly, I don't believe that there's anything that can support making a decision tonight on any development without a full council member, a staff, being present, including the mayor, nor so many issues as Bob's already presented that we don't have answers for. This is not representing the citizens.
Sir, we're not going to make decisions tonight. I can rest assured, it's a first reading. I'll go into it more when our topic comes up, but this is the first time this is being presented to council. So rest assured, we are not making decisions tonight, and we have as many questions as you do.
Well, good. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. I will maintain some of my lists for Mr. Short next time, but I think that these are, as already presented, from the past and then tonight. If we're going to consider mud issues, additional taxation with the citizens, the citizens should have a right and should know exactly what it's including. And we don't have adequate water, and if you were in the meeting last week, we don't have water that can even be drawn into the city for three to five years to support the existing houses, let alone adding up to 5,000 more. I don't even know how we're even considering this stuff.
Sir, what subdivision do you live in, again? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Wellington Manor.
Oh, so that is not in the city?
It's in the county, Rockwall County. Tapestry is being recommended across the street and Trilogy on the other side of us.
Yep.
So I hope you didn't mean to discredit me or disrespect.
Oh, no, no, no. I just want, I wasn't familiar with that street number, and I wanted to clarify.
Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Britta Jo.
Britta Jo, 256 Stevens Road, Rockwall, Texas. You read the rules to us at the beginning about stability, and yet I want to once again note that the worst displays of instability have come from the city council members towards the citizens. And Lorna, you have shown that again tonight. At the beginning, you mentioned not interrupting, yet you interrupt at will, as I have watched multiple members of this city council and the mayor do. You emphasize civility, yet the only people I've watched get yelled at during these meetings and get yelled at by other people is your mayor and another city council member yelling at me and Bob two meetings ago. Plenty of people were here to watch that. I urge you to stop reading the rules to us at the beginning of every meeting when you yourself sit in the chair facing us and do not keep them. You represent us, and you seem to have forgotten that. I also want to emphasize your blatant disrespect for anybody who lives in the McLendon-Chisholm ETJ, which, by the way, Trilogy is about to be annexed into your city, yet they were in the ETJ. You act like we are not part of your city, yet I live closer to that development than you do in Chisholm Crossing. Do not treat us like we do not have a right to stand here and speak to you about the issues that affect our home more than they affect yours. I am closer to that development than you are. It is your job to sit and listen to me. It is not my job to be bullied by you. Now to what I actually wanted to talk about. Last week, the Water District was talked about. We heard from Blackland how you guys ran out of water years ago, how it would take three to five years to get the water where it needs to be. And I watched Misty Ventura sit there and listen to all of it, so it's not like Huffins doesn't know where we're at with the water here. On top of that, I found out today that the North Texas Water District is telling its member cities that capacity is limited. And for you guys to become a direct member, which they mentioned at the last meeting, would require all of the current member cities voting for you to become a direct customer. I highly doubt they're going to do that with capacity being limited. All of this is to show the water situation is nowhere near to being fixed. One thing I wanted to talk about today that was a bright spot in all of this is that I found out today that Mayor Short has signed a resolution, a resolution that opposes developers' special districts. And he signed it this week with all of the other mayors in the county of Rockwall. I have a document that you can see with his signature and the signatures of the mayor of the City of Rockwall, the mayor of the City of Fayette, the mayor of the City of Mobile, the mayor of the City of Roy City, the mayor of the City of Heath, and the mayor of the City of Rowlett. In this resolution, it talks about developments that overload existing infrastructure and diminish the quality of life and increase the financial burden for all citizens in Rockwall County, and how the undersigned elected officials do oppose the formation by a developer of any and all special districts in Rockwall County. The development that is on the agenda tonight wants another special district. For all of you that don't know, that is called a mud. I am so proud of Mayor Short for signing this, and I hope that you, as a city council, will rally behind him to do what should have been done in the first place, which is get a new attorney who will defend your citizens and our city from these developments that are bringing in combined total 5,000 people between Tapestry and Trilogy, which will double the population of McLendon-Chisholm that is currently at 4,100. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for speaking. As I said earlier, we'll address the item 7.2 in a moment, and we look forward to, we're thankful that you gave us those comments. They're very helpful, and I'm sure you'll see that we do have the same sort of questions for the developer when they get up here. So thank you. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, item number six. Does either council member want to withdraw any of the items from the dispassion?
No.
If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.7.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. A second.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three to zero. Items for discussion and action. Item 7.1, review and acceptance of the FY22 audited financial statements. We do have the audit in, and do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, or, I guess not Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Not even that.
Members of the council, it's a pleasure to talk to you tonight. We have Kyle from, a principal in Murray, Pashaw, and Kepperton, our independent auditors here today. I'd like to start, recognize them for their hard work. They've, as you know, we had a little bit of a harder struggle last year. They've worked. They've worked extremely hard during Q1 and then kicked it off with the city in early January for the city's portion of this, and have worked hard in the last couple of months to get this out to you. We have Kyle here to go through it, and what we need at the end is simply an acceptance of the audit, a motion to accept the audit. Thank you.
Appreciate the kind words, Conrad. Council appreciates the opportunity in allowing our firm to be engaged to provide this financial statement audit. We appreciate and really have strived to work on making sure that we get these in a more timely fashion and having Conrad on board, and of course, Ray Smith has been always an instrumental help in making sure that we met that goal this year. I won't kind of go through... it seems like every time we get one of these reports, it feels thicker and thicker, so I won't bore you with a lot of the detail. We'll just kind of go through it from a highlighted level. If you guys have the reports in front of you, the first piece is the independent auditor report. This has actually changed a little bit over the past year, but basically, at the end of the day, it puts our opinion at the first paragraph and says that there is no material differences in anything that we had in your guys' audit. Kind of goes through our basis for the opinion, your responsibilities and our responsibilities, and then any required supplemental information that we disclose. So, the next little piece, I think, is one of the more beneficial aspects of a city financial statement, which is basically the management discussion analysis. This really is a highlight of the fiscal year of what took place in the city and kind of goes through and highlights each of those areas of where there's growth, and then it talks about, too, the different types of financial statements. There's a little bit trickier with government financials. You have a government-wide financial, and you've got a... And then you've got a fund financial statement. So, this kind of goes in and discusses about the differences and how they are represented, and also highlights some areas on where they actually can be found. Really, there's nothing new that I'm not going to disclose to you guys. This is about a five-month-old report. You guys have current financials and discussions with that. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, I know we've gone over with Conrad, gone over with Ray, and addressed any questions that was brought up on that regard. If there's anything specific that you guys want to talk about, by all means.
I have one point of correction for you. And it's really minor. It's on page 38, and under infrastructure, it says we have four city streets that we maintain. Just delete that because we have more than that now. But I do believe Councilmember Tucker did have a couple of questions that he wanted to ask you.
Okay. Just numbers, I wanted to just verify, and I was looking at, on page five, they refer to the city's general fund report, a total ending fund balances of $3,690,795. Is that the unreserved fund? Is that the fund that, basically, what we have in reserve in terms of cash?
You know, your general fund not necessarily represents cash. But, yes, that is the unrestricted money that 3.69 in theory.
And does that break down to... I think it breaks down to individual funds. Am I correct? I think there's a capital investment fund, or there's another couple others. What I'm getting at is, is this unrestricted in terms of if we had a desire to utilize it to pay for a large capital investment? Could we utilize... I mean, this is hypothetical and extreme, but could we utilize all of that money for that particular investment?
Correct.
We could. Okay. That clarifies it. I was looking at earlier was the fungibility of monies that may have been dedicated to individual funds, and so that answers my question.
So, were there any glaring errors that we need to fix as far as our business practice concerns our finances?
No glaring errors. You know, it's just a lot of two is making sure that what you guys get over as far as assets that are transferred over from the PID. It's just, you know, communication, like anything, it's always a relationship. So, it's getting with P3, making sure that anything that gets transferred, anything that gets moved over, any requests or anything like that are being able to get done in a timely manner in that regard. So, other than that, there really isn't much that we looked at that was an issue that caused a glare. You know, like I said, we are usually pretty much in good communication throughout the year as we prepare for the audit with Ray on anything that we may be aware of, that we can look for, but that's very helpful, as a lot of times, you know, some of these other smaller cities don't have a great resource like that, and I think that's a tremendous asset to the city.
Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add to the discussion at all?
He did pay me to say that, I just wanted to know.
Councilmember Kipit, I failed to recognize our finance director back there. I did not see him. He snuck in late, I didn't see him. He has been tremendous in helping and putting this together, as I'm sure he has been all years that he's been here. Very top-notch, a great partner in this overall financial world. And any of you that have some questions about the specific finances and the numbers, please come and talk to me about that, and so if you have questions on what this means and what that means, I'm pretty sure I can answer, and if not, we got these two gentlemen right here that are at our quick call to get that, and we'll get you those questions answered right away.
Any other questions?
I have one more question, and that was on the same page, on page five, third paragraph down, they're talking about last year's ending fund balance was $2,029,516, and then it increased approximately $1.6 million during this current year. Was there a specific reason as to such a large increase in that period of time, and what can you allude to why that occurred, or probably building, but specifically?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, and there's some other information towards the back, which really kind of shows the budget to actual in comparison, and you can see the growth in not only revenue, but assets that have come over. If you look at page...
Maybe a significant part was inflation and...
You know, there's been a spike in sales tax revenue, and there's just been growth.
Well, we had a lot of additional permits. We got a lot more permanent income last year than we had anticipated. I think that had to do... a lot to do with that.
Mm-hmm. I think we kind of made some notes. This really isn't a formal report, you know, it's just a lot to go through, but that's really the areas is towards that back where it does that budget to actual. There's some notes in there, or there's some notes in the financial side of it that we speak to.
If it's in here, if it's in here, I'll find it. I'll read it later. I say if it's in here, I'll find it later.
Yep.
Thanks.
If there's no further questions, I'll accept a motion to approve the audit.
I'll make a motion to approve the audit as written, provided. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Okay, item 7.2, First Reading, Telus Man LLC Development Agreement. I think I've beat a dead horse on this, but this is the first time that council has been presented with the plan that Telus has put forward. This is the opportunity for council to listen to what they are suggesting, and then we will obviously have some questions for them, and then we'll have a second reading at another time. I will speak to the mayor offline after the... when he gets back and suggest that we have another formal discussion with Telus before we go... excuse me, Telus before we go into that second reading and make any decisions on the development agreement. This takes more than just one or two meetings, especially when the first meeting is... has limited attendance by the council members. So, we're here to listen tonight, and then make... I do have some comments that I'd like to make as well, and I'm sure that the other council members do, too. So, without further ado, we'll turn the floor over to the Telus Man group.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I'd say mayor, we're missing a few, I appreciate that. My name's David Blom, Partner and President of Telus Group, 130 North Preston, Suite 130, Prosper, Texas. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, better upcoming master planned community. For the reasons I will present, I think the development agreement is considered a win-win event after we go through the information that we present to you here. I'll be brief, and I'm going to hit the points that I believe are important to the city. With me here tonight, Andre Ferrari and Justin Craig, Vice Presidents of Acquisitions and Planning for us, and we're happy to answer any questions at any time. Relative to what's important to the city, I do have a personal appreciation for the history out here. My wife Julie and I raised our kids in Rockwall for 19 years. We watched Poland Elementary get built, we watched Rockwall Heath High School get built. We raised our kids out here. It's one of the reasons we moved out here, is to be in Rockwall schools. So, I appreciate that. Our children did start and finish here, lived in Chandler's Landing. We also had a one-and-a-half-acre lot off FM 549, so we have friends that live in Crest Ridge Meadows and Stoneley, so I really do appreciate what people move out here for on the larger lots. We think, I think, that there's room for what we're presenting tonight, and I'll show you why. Also took an active role in a scout troop that moved from Rockwall to Heath about 10 or 15 years ago, so was very much a part of the culture and the community here, served on the Rockwall Child Protective Services Board as President for a few years, et cetera. So, I get that part, and we're not ignoring that part. Big picture, we recognize the perspective and the prioritization of open space and low-density and quality of life out here. We're not ignoring that in what we're presenting. Telus Group was comprised of 11 people who have extensive experience in development. My partner Craig and I have ownership in Windsong Ranch in Prosper. We're proud of what we have created there and what it's become. We're very hands-on, we're very passionate about what we do, which is master planned communities where families can raise their kids, enjoy social activities, and enjoy multiple generations. We had a lot of examples where there's two or three generations that live in Windsong, and I use Windsong because it's the most recent example, and it's very tangible, it's something we've actually done, not waving our arms, saying, "Look what we might do." We've proven ourselves in that respect. And the passion just comes from creating something. May Hard Egg Farm, 2,000 acres. I started working on it in 2007, and for me to drive through there now and see, and you'll see these photos, some of the things that we've done with it, families raising their kids there, watching dads ride their bikes after their kids into the elementary school that's on site, that is a satisfying part of this business that has so many difficult aspects to it. School, lifestyle, social events, and open space are only a few of the keys to having successful master planned community, but they are very important. In January, we had the pleasure of hosting Mr. Hildebrandt and a couple of council members on a tour of Windsong Ranch. We had actually extended an open invitation and actually had a van with 40 seats reserved because we weren't sure how many we were going to have. We ended up with a couple of council members and with Mr. Hildebrandt, which is great. Came out to see, back in January, came out to see Windsong in person and to listen to the story of how Windsong came about, what it is today, and hear about the principles that have guided us from 2012, when we actually finalized the planning of Windsong, through today. So, here's some illustrations and key measures as of Windsong today. It's 2,100 acres, we have 600 acres of open space. Lot size ranges from half-acre lots to townhomes. We have many families in Windsong that are on their third house, even more that are on their second, where they've moved up as the family's grown, or they've moved down as kids have moved out, grandparents have moved in, which is a big trend across the country, grandparents being closer to grandkids. Prices range from 2022 from half-million to 2.8. We have a long list of awards, we think, we like to think, I think it's fact, that we're the most award-winning community in North Texas. I'll show you that list later. We developed a very strong partnership with the Town of Prosper, who happened to be right at the size you are when I started working on Windsong in 2007. Prosper ISD, Prosper Police and Fire Rescue, all of those we had to partner with in some form or fashion, and we would highly encourage and welcome anybody reaching out to any of those agencies or the Town of Prosper to ask about their experience with Telus Group. Principals in Telus have managed the development project from the first shovel, which was March of 2013, until we sold the last lots. We signed that contract last week. This was, or is, a video that's only 30 seconds long, but I don't think we're going to tempt fate today, the way the computer's acting. Oh, nice. So, some further illustrations of what that open space looks like in relationship to the homes in these pictures here. That's actually a townhome in the upper-right-hand corner. Green Belt, main amenity on the bottom left, lakes. Main amenity center from a different perspective, community garden in the upper-right, which has been very, very popular with our residents. We're actually expanding that. And then in the lower-right, there's actually a 50-foot Atmos gas line easement that we converted into an esplanade and green belt that we use to host events, and especially the two annual events we have, a Wyandotte Music Festival in October, and then a lifestyle health-themed activity in April. This is an example of some of the homes that are in Windsong. This isn't marketing pictures, these are homes that are standing in Windsong. We have strict architectural guidelines and design covenants that are created by Windstead out of Austin. They're probably one, if not the best, one of the best law firms in terms of HOA law and property covenants, and that helps protect the quality of what you develop over the long term, because at some point, the developer's out and the residents take over the HOA and control it. So, if you don't have all that established, you run the risk of it going downhill in a hurry. This is way too small to read. We have over 40 awards, local, regional, and national, for Windsong Ranch. Important one, I think, is up in the upper-right, if you can read that, the National Association of Home Builders. So, on a national scale, we've been awarded five different times awards for being in the top six communities in the nation, and that includes Best Master Planned Community as well as Lifestyle and Amenities. We are in the process of taking the necessary steps to take the same principles and success into your ETJ on the former Mann Ranch, which is an 1,100-acre tract located on FM 548 at the far, what I'll call, southern end of McLendon's ETJ. We are in the process of documenting the necessary utilities and agreements that will lead us deeper into the land planning stage and delivery of our first phases in late 2024. Mrs. Mann remains involved with us as a partner. The district that we are operating under was created and formed legislatively in 2009, well before we made aware of this land, so it exists, it was formed in 2009, and we'll be using that, along with the vested rights we currently have in the property, to provide a community that is every bit the quality and success of Windsong Ranch. This is a closer-up view, it shows you the relationship to 548. As you can see from this slide, there's significant open space, which is the green color on this. As you can see from this slide, there's significant open space, which is the green color on this area. It's over 360 acres. There are two large lakes on the property, as well as a couple of smaller ones. Very attractive. It's got a lot of the land characteristics that we had in Windsong. Little bit gentler topography, but major water features, adjacent sees of some major tree masses, all of which currently sit behind fences, which are unable to be enjoyed by anyone. And these are assets that we can use as we create open space, hike and bike trails, and those would be available and open to the public, not just to the residents of our So overview, location is, let me go back one. Location is right along FM 548. And I want to make this point about text dot. You can see at the top of this screen here, it might be better looked seen here. 548 between Highway 80 and 205 is in the process of being widened to four lanes, in some locations, six. I believe Mr. Tucker had some postings on this. He seems to keep pretty close track of text dot, which is challenging at times. With the direct connection of 548 to 205 to the north and Highway 80 to the south, the impact on anything to the north, especially those that live three, four, six miles away, is going to be very small. I won't say it won't be anything, but it's going to be very small. We're oriented to a text dot road that is 70% design, and they've already started moving fences on the Mann Ranch property. They're already moving fences and preparing to start work. I'm not going to say they're going to be fast. I've heard the phrase, there's human years, dog years, and then text dot years. So, I mean, they do what they can, but the point is to be that stage of design and to be moving fences, and the right-of-way along the Mann frontage has been provided. So there's nothing standing in the way of what's happening. Just want to go over some highlights. Some of these have already said, open space I've covered. That would include over 10 miles of hike and bike trails. We're not even close to having the final first plan. We know we'll have at least 10. That's a conservative number. In Windsong, we've got 30. It'll be at least 10. Elementary school, this is really important for everybody, I think, to understand. Over 90% of our land, or to say it differently, less than 10% of our land is in Rockwall. Over 90% is in Forney ISD. We've already had meetings with Dr. Terry at Forney ISD. We've committed to him to providing an elementary school site at no cost. We'll continue those discussions as we get, you know, further down the road. We think that's important to be a community and that, so that the burden on the school district, whether it's Forney or Rockwall, is limited, and you actually contribute towards having that in place. On-site emergency services, it's our understanding that at some point, the city is going to want to start to not depend on other agencies. Through the development agreement, we are providing a vehicle by which you can help bootstrap emergency services without spending a lot of money, or this is certainly a significant contribution towards that. It would include a two-acre site in our community at no cost for emergency services. The city is currently working, I'll let Mr. Hildebrandt address this further, but the city's working with Terrell on an MOU and an understanding of how to get part of the water solution solved. There's several moving parts to that equation, but the bottom line is, we are going to be funding a very large portion of a project that I'll describe in a second, that would help solve the water problem on an accelerated basis. 548, I've already mentioned, is being expanded. I also mentioned the feed restrictions, which CCRs is what they're typically called. Benefits to the city, we have filed with PUC several months ago to decertify our CCN out of High Point and have offered that to the city in the development agreement draft that's being considered. I'll let your consultants tell you more. It's our understanding that that is a very important piece to getting accelerated action on the part of North Texas and on entering into any other agreements for water supply. We have agreed to provide $17 million of a $44 million water project that would be coming from Terrell northward, that would provide water to our community with Terrell being, and this is not agreed to now, I want to be clear about that. I'm describing to you what our understanding is, and Mr. Hildebrandt can fill in the blanks. But we would be contributing that money, no cost, to the city to bring that trunk line up. That's not, you know, pure charity. We need water. There are a couple of ways we can do it. This is the best long-term solution, and it also helps to get McLendon over the hump in terms of getting a CCN and getting a big project paid for by others that could bode well for the future and perhaps the near future. Our entity, the district, would be the one that ends up going through eminent domain to acquire right-of-way and the easements necessary for that line, which will happen faster than a public agency can do it. The development agreement provides a retail water surcharge, would be paid by us, assuming that the city is a retail provider and the city is acquiring it on a wholesale basis from the city of Terrell. So Terrell provides the water, that's where the water comes from. We've met several times with the city of Terrell, Mr. Hildebrandt's aware of that. There's a solution where a lot of parties can win and solve a lot of problems and accomplish a lot of things that are mutually beneficial with the city coming out of pocket either very little or nothing. And then that last point to what I just said, the development agreement also provides a long-term path where the city in the future, when I say future, you know, 15, 20 years down the road, then infrastructure's in the ground, the city has the option in the disagreement to actually take that over at no cost and operate it. You wouldn't want to assume the debt that goes with it, so you'd have to wait for that to be paid off, but that's huge. No capital outlay. Emergency services, we think that it's a good thing to provide a foundation for establishing a police department. We're not trying to presume what the city should or shouldn't do. This is just our understanding based on meetings that have taken place and looking at what the future brings. Telus would contribute approximately $700,000 towards city emergency services. That's, for lack of a better term, sort of capital fees. As lots are completed, we would be paying fees. As lots are completed, they would total about $700,000. And that's based on about 2700 lots. I don't see us reaching 31. That's for water study purposes and for press release purposes. We're going to end up somewhere between 25, 26, 27, probably, when all said and done, to treat the land the right way. At full buildout, the city would be able to collect over $800,000 a year annually, recurring annual revenue. This is at full buildout, which is 10, 12 years down the road, based on fees that the residents would pay directly to the city for emergency service support. To put that in context, I believe in 2022, the entire ad valorem tax revenue for the city was about $800,000. Parks and trails, I'll reiterate that that to be part of a community and in view of what's said in the comprehensive plan, there's a call for open space. Happy to start providing what might be the first big part of that and allow the public to enjoy it at our cost. Additional city tax revenue in the ETJ, sales tax to the city doesn't apply under sort of normal rules. What we're saying is, hey, we're in your ETJ, we'll stay in your ETJ. We'll enter a 380 agreement, which is an exhibit to what you are considering, where out of the two cents that's collected by the city, one and a half of that goes to the city, one and a half cents, three-fourths of it would go to the city. If I understand correctly, a portion of that goes to support ad valorem tax. Right? So
Currently, that's correct.
Currently, and that may change, but the point is, there's found money that would be generated either by commercial development and the sales tax from retail or commercial, or from builders, depending on where they source their materials. The actual home building process, construction process and development process could provide some revenue there. I'm not going to try to tell you what that number is, because we're still researching that. But the opportunity is there, and that's something that we're willing to put into The comprehensive plan, on page 11 is pretty informative. It's, page 11, if you read it, it basically sort of holds up his hands and say, hey, in the ETJ, laws were recently passed, the city has less control, the districts have more control. And in many regards, that's true. This paragraph, you know, basically, you know, makes the point that residents can be in the ETJ, enjoy all the city's amenities and public infrastructure, not have to pay for any of it. Well, all the things I've just enumerated here this evening to you, come forward and provide the city with tangible benefits. It's not like, look at us, we're wonderful, don't you want us here? It's like, there are some real tangible things in here that have monetary, long-term, recurring value, and it's the right thing to do. Benefit to us is we get to deal with one municipality on processing for plats and things. We have committed in the agreement to road standards and other things that we don't have to commit to, but they meet or exceed your current ordinance in terms of development I don't know what else to add to that. We are, we're trying to do this the right way. We're coming forward, listening, seeing where we're landing, trying to not be a burden to the city, and provide something that's every bit the quality of what you see in Windsong Ranch, or in some cases, saw in person in Windsong Ranch. So I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Not sure what forum you want to run. We're happy to answer as many questions for as long you want to ask them. I can be seated, I can stand here. You guys tell me what you need me to do.
No, I know that council may have some questions. I would just like to add that I appreciated when we took our field trip to their currently built Windsong Ranch in Prosper. One of the items that they asked us to do is go knock on the door and ask any resident that lives here how they like living here. And you could tell that there were, I mean, people loved living there with all the, how they built it, the open space, the walking, the trails. It didn't seem as dense as you'd think with the numbers thrown out there, because it had that open space all around. Another thing, just another added fiscal benefit to the city is the development agreement, albeit in not approved status, draft status. But it also includes having all the solid waste come to the city. So, and the city would provide the solid waste through our contractual citywide service, which would bring additional revenue to us as well. So there's little pieces and pieces. If you add them all up, there's a substantial amount of benefit, qualitative as well as quantitative, that will come to the city through evaluating this. And I 100% think that you should ask your questions and beat these guys up. I mean, be tough on them, and I think they're strong and big, and they can take the questions, but I think that's prudent for the city to do is in the negotiation and evaluation process.
Well, I do appreciate the fact that we did get the tour of Windsong Ranch in December. I, however, can't really support the document as it is written right now, because I feel that there are too many things that need to be fixed or discussed. And I'll just go broad brush over my opinion. It seems to me that you want to pay and use city services without being part of our city. I understand, you know, and the public safety, the water, et cetera. And I think at the beginning, that's going to be a drain on our resources. Second thing that I think we need to discuss is the district land expansion without the city agreement. I don't believe that that's acceptable either. I can see the district then acquiring land that is around it, and then we have no say into what's going on, and I don't think that's right. And then what I think that everyone tonight has said, and I'll reiterate, is there's too many undefinables in the developer's agreement as it is right now. We have exhibits that are missing, the water, we can't provide water at this time. The wastewater, there's been no mention of how sewer will be taken care of. I understand that there was a district formed in 2007 that had wastewater treatment facility on site that has been approved. So I presume that that's what you're going to do. And then public safety. Fire, that will be a drain on our resources at the very beginning. It will cause us to build a fire station. And we, if, the way the development agreement is written now is that we have three years to do that once all the infrastructure is laid out, and I'm not sure that we can do that. Secondly, the police, we don't have a police department. We rely on the Rockwall County Sheriff. How will that work? And finally, EMS, we don't own EMS. That again is provided for through the county. So there's too many questions in depth that I have that I would like to go through this with more detail with you. And I don't know if that has been done within city staff, but there are some things that I am not comfortable with and I would not support it at this time. So that's just my thoughts. Dan, did you have any?
Yes, please.
May I address a couple of those?
Yes.
The ability in the agreement, the way it's drafted, to annex more land in the district, the way it's worded is very specific. It's a defined term that defines non-district land. And it's simply what we own, which is part of what used to be Ms. Mann's property. That's what I'm going to call the rough edges and the corners. That's all we're talking about. It's like her homestead, there's a small rectangular piece that's, I think, 44 acres. It's not just carte blanche, go take what you can. It's only what we currently own that, for whatever reason, is not in.
Is not currently in.
Correct.
That explains that, because the way that I read it is that surrounding land, if a homeowner or a landowner said, I want to be part of this development now, you could do that and we would have no say in that.
No, we can't. It's a defined term in the agreement, non-district land, and if you look at that, we're limited to just what's in the boundaries, what we currently own.
Currently own, okay.
Wastewater permit is in place. Our intention there is to do package plant as an interim to getting to a full-time, permanent sewer treatment plant, which understandably is about $15 million, but you have to get there in steps. Water, I mean, we're not, well, we understand there's a huge water problem in the area. We're actually coming forward with this solution, and we understand that we can't do anything without having something rectified.
Yeah.
We could turn around to High Point today and serve the first 1,200 lots. Okay, great. I mean, Mr. Fredrickson was here last week, and I was here and listened to the report. We understand all the aspects of that maybe better than you think. We're not presuming that we can drop and just start turning taps on. We're actually bringing the expenditures, the infrastructure, the design, and acquisition of the right-of-way to help that water infrastructure. Certainly helps us, but it also provides an avenue for the city in the future. Timing, I think, is really important to talk about, because, you know, the first lot, if everything goes basically well, is going to be late in 2024. Your first homeowner's not in until summer of 2025. You know, there's a lot of things that could happen during that period of time and that probably need to happen. I know the city's been considering a couple of things. So we're not presuming to tell the city what it should or shouldn't do. We are acting on things that we've read, things we've met about, and knowing what's coming down, coming down the pipe. So So, as I wrote down things as you were speaking, those are the things that I think I can address that we are capable of addressing, and somebody else, I know Mr. Councilman Tucker has additional questions, but I don't know if Mr. Hildebrand wanted to add anything.
Well, as staff, we've all, we've all participated in some degree or the, or another in the development of the draft agreement that you have in front of you, from our city attorney to our buyer, to our city planner and engineer, and, short, so we've, and it's not meant to be a final document, but definitely closer than, and I know throughout that whole process, the last few months or whatever, they've asked me, at least, please give us feedback, give us feedback, so it's appropriate what you're saying, they've asked for that from the elected officials, I probably haven't given you that as much as I probably should have, obviously, but they're, they've been very good at asking, what do you need, how do you want this to find, and worked with us very well in the process up to this point.
Sorry, this question's for me. You know, some of the concerns that I have, Lauren has already alluded to, and that was police, the fact that we don't have a police department as of yet, this will basically push us into that process, and obviously, the funding that comes along with it will be in question, so that was a concern. EMS, again, we don't provide EMS, that's through the county, and that's gonna be another conversation. The sewer, I was concerned about, because I assumed it was gonna be an off-site sewer facility of some sort, and you're saying now they're going to be developing over a period of time, it'll be a large, a large waste plant facility, as far as initially it will be, what kind of sewer system?
It'll be a small, what they call, package plant.
Yes.
And then, probably two stages of those.
Okay.
Leading to a more, or a permanent plant, ultimately, I don't know what the timing is, but that's the way it would occur.
Okay, and then, the other question was, how much of the, how much of the project is in Rockwall County, how much is in Kaufman County?
Eighty acres.
Eighty acres is in Rock...
In round numbers, 70, 70, 90 acres in Rockwall, balance is in Kaufman.
Okay.
What is it, 80? Sorry, 80 acres in Rockwall, the rest is, the remainder is in Kaufman, so 1,000, 1,000 in Kaufman, 80 in Rockwall.
I appreciate the fact that you're going to assist us with obtaining water in one way or another, it seems like, in your efforts in that direction. Decertification with High Point, is that problematic for your company?
We don't believe it's problematic, you look at the precedents that have been followed by the PUC for years, the circumstances that we're in are identical, very similar to a number of cases in the last few years, where if a particular provider cannot provide water, can file for decertification, typically that provider, frequently that provider will file a lawsuit against the PUC, that typically gets dismissed by the PUC, under reasons that I'll let you read about, 'cause I won't try to describe it here, but basically, the PUC's taking the position, if you can't provide the water, the CCN should go to somebody that can. And since I'm on public record here, and Mr. Steinhagen's video, which is capturing great pictures of him back in my head, the High Point people have been nothing but great. We met with Tyler several times, were very upfront about it, went to meetings, several meetings, and they just can't provide the water for the entire project, and so, we were very upfront with them about what we could do, I don't think they're happy about that. They did file a lawsuit, there was a motion for abatement, which was denied by the PUC, and that's the current status.
Okay, thanks for your honesty and your worthrightness on that. You know, we've had some conversation, this has been my last question, but we've had some conversation about sirens, warning sirens for storm activity, that kind of thing in the past year, and whether we were gonna put some into play in McLendon-Chisholm itself. Is that something, I don't recall having seen that up at Windsong, is that something that you would, is there, is that present?
Yeah, we've got one or two just now. We have two.
So, you would make a...
On the west side, on G Road, we worked with the Director of Engineering, his name's Hewland Webb, the city, the town, Town Prosper, I keep trying to call you guys Town Prosper, City, there's two High Points on the property, we put the sirens there.
So, that's feasible to do that with this project, you believe?
I mean, it's actually expected, we're just not to that level of planning yet, but short answer is yes. I mean, it's very typical and necessary.
Because you have that high-density population that you can alert, and in these communities, people are outside all the time, it seems, there's a lot of activity around, it seems, so it'd be appropriate, thank you.
One thing I was going to ask about is, when the district was first formed, it was a freshwater, is that the right term, freshwater district?
Freshwater Supply District.
Yes, so...
Ledbetter Freshwater Supply District, number one.
So, why the transfer then to a mud?
By getting a mud conversion, you're allowed to do additional, perform additional road construction and some storm sewer and get reimbursed through bond issues, that a freshwater supply district wouldn't otherwise be able to. And it's an administrative function at TCU, so it's administrative process. I mean, a district is a district, so all it does is add to the list of what you can build and what you can get reimbursed for, which benefits the community and ultimately long-term its benefit as well.
I think one thing, another thing that's bothering me a little bit, is that the way the document reads, it takes the county out of the process, and as far as, and many of these services are done by the county, and I just wondered why you did that in your document, or in the document.
Well, we have had meetings with Skeet Phillips and Monique at Kaufman County several months ago, a couple of meetings, actually. We know that we're still subject to the, I refer to them as a 1461 agreement, which sort of designate inter-local responsibilities, we'll still have to go through Kaufman County for certain things.
And Rockwall, too?
There is a separate 1461 between Rockwall and...
Yeah, yeah, because they, I don't think...
Those don't go away with this agreement, those still stay in place.
Because I don't think they've received any documentation from you guys yet, Rockwall County.
They received from us about a year ago, our plan for development.
The plan for development, but not this.
Since then, no, I mean, they're actually in our Phase 6, I mean, Phase 6 is literally 10, 12 years down the road, there's so many things that have happened before then, but trying to talk about that today would be pretty much a waste of time. We respect that they're there, we're not ignoring them, it's just practically speaking, it's not what we're talking about.
So, I think that, another thought, or I know I'm, I'll just say it, it just seems to me, what is, I know what the impact is if we don't have a development agreement with you. If we don't do a development agreement with you, then you will develop the area as you see fit, you'll work your water issues as you need to work them, your sewer will go as it is, and your density will be what you want it to be. But there's really no difference if you do work with us. I know it's, it may be confusing to the community, you're in the ETJ, so you can build as many houses as you want to in that ETJ, being in a development agreement, really, this development agreement doesn't stop that. You can still build the density that you wish.
Yeah, the plan for development would still govern, what we're trying to show you, and basically is a description of the vested rights, what we're trying to show you is what we did at Windsong is, while that might be true, and there are others that have done that in places, we're not doing that, we're doing what you saw there. The right answer for the area is water solution, open space, share amenities, we simplify our lives, we're not, I mean, we're not doing it just out of the kindness of our hearts, we simplify our lives by having definition with you, you process plats, we're committing standards, we're funding emergency services, that, you know, we can get emergency services somewhere else, but it's better for us to have it the way we proposed it in the development agreement, and especially long-term, and our view is, if the city chooses to go that direction, it helps the city, too, because what we help fund isn't just for us, we can spread that to the benefit of whatever area the city chooses to serve.
I mean, I don't even know if we're allowed to have a fire substation in Kaufman County. It's not gonna be in Rockwall County, it's gonna be in Kaufman County.
Correct, correct, but that's where, I mean, I'll let staff advise you on that, but ETJ lines and ETJ rules go separately in many ways from county lines.
I still feel that it would be prudent to have this discussion with the entire council and feed off more questions, this has just been an initial set of questions, as the audience knows, we received this on Friday, so it takes a little bit of time to digest this, and I would personally like to get more people's input on this.
No, and it was meant to get that, and as council has questions, please submit them to me, and I will in turn let the developer know, as I said before, they've been actively, they agree with you, they want to have your, to address your concerns. I let them know that we were gonna have a limited council tonight, and they were, we still want to come, and...
Well, I appreciate that, I really do appreciate that, because I know you at least have my point of view, and you have Dan's point of view, and you've got Lloyd, he's brand-new, this is his second meeting, so he's getting there.
We have to worry about the quiet ones sometimes.
The quiet one, you do, you do. So, if I could feasibly ask you to come back again in two weeks for our next meeting, the 14th?
Yes, we were gonna, that was gonna be the schedule for that.
But I really don't want to do, I would suggest to the mayor that we don't want to do a vote at that time, we still have another discussion going.
Well, just like this meeting, we probably will set it as a review action, but if you take no action, that is 100% okay for that. We're trying to work a timeline to get things done with, I mean, as we mentioned, as we mentioned, that to benefit multiple entities...
I know, there's a lot of moving pieces.
A lot of moving pieces, so with that in mind, you need to be understanding those, but otherwise, you need to feel comfortable about getting through this process and...
Well, I so appreciate you guys coming down and talking to us, and I know you have your best intentions to make this something good for Rockwall County and for Kaufman County as well, we just have some wrinkles we want to try to smooth out a little bit.
No, we absolutely have the intentions that we've described tonight, and then between now and the 14th, you know, if you need us to provide materials, information, be available for a meeting, make another presentation, I mean, whatever you guys want is fine, I mean, it's very open, that's the way we are.
Okay, we'll talk to the mayor when he gets back. Would it be possible for you to give us these slides, so we can hang them on our website? Is that feasible?
I don't see why not, they were presented in public tonight, so...
Right, that way, instead of embedding them into our council minutes, that way, if we hang it on the website, people can review it and potentially ask questions to our city administrator, because he'll be the fielder of all questions, that way he has a centralized bank.
Yeah, I can't think of why we wouldn't.
Anybody else have? All right, well, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
All right, number eight, updates, discussion, and direction to staff. Does anybody have any follow-on direction to staff? All right, council member reports and announcements, does anybody have any announcements to make?
Just looking forward to going on the county consortium and be transferring that position from you, and I know that you've held that in a very steady fashion for the past number of years, and I've followed your leadership on that, and I'm looking forward to it.
All right, anything? Thank you very much for, both of you, for being here tonight, and appreciate your input. So, with that, it is now 7:55, we'll adjourn for the evening.